Okay, the board is returning from a board interview conducted down in the Wheelwright Room. So I'll call the meeting back to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff in attendance this evening. We have people from the community here as well. Good evening, those watching from home. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting in 2024. It's nice to be back. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartren. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our town manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. We also have our assistant town manager, Melissa Roy, in attendance, and my name is Nico Papakosin-Dies. Before we get into the agenda, I'd just like to, two quick things. I would like to recognize and thank our Public Works Department who got us through the storm both yesterday and today, and just can't say enough about our Public Works Department, and want to thank them for making our roads safe. I think our Highway Superintendent Jay Perkins and everybody that was working yesterday. A lot of hard work, a lot of hours, and we really appreciate their efforts, so thank you. On a sadder note, I'd like to take a moment to recognize that a member of our community passed away between Christmas and New Year's, Mr. Paul Burnett, who I'm sure many of us know, was a long-term volunteer for the town with the planning board. He served about 18 years on the select board, also volunteered for decades throughout the community. He and his family were also local business owners. So if the board and those in attendance this evening would join me, I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Burnett. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family. May his memory be eternal. Mr. Dean, I know you worked with Mr. Burnett part of the time he was on the select board. Do you have some memories that you'd like to share?
I did, and I just wanted to say my condolences to the Burnett family, to Jean and everyone. I did get a chance to work with Paul early in my tenure. Paul was always a spirited select board member. He added a lot to the conversation, and he certainly served the town well in the capacities that he served in over the years, so he'll be missed, and we appreciate him, and, like I said, our condolences to the family.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Dean, we have some bid openings, I believe.
Yes, the first one is the septic equipment bid.
Okay.
And I'll pass it down.
Okay, so the bid opening is for the septic equipment. The first bid is from Saveco, S-A-V-E-C-O, North America, and they are based out of Kearney, Illinois. And this is a lump sum, provide one septic pretreatment system. The total bid cost is And the second bid for the septic equipment is from, let's see. Find their address. It's from Claro, C-L-A-R-O Environmental Technologies. Okay, the only address I see, Madam Clerk, is from Montreal. And the total lump sum bid for providing one septic pretreatment system is for $288,200. It's 288200.
Those are American dollars?
According to the bid, yes. Seeing no others, I would entertain a motion to forward the bids to the Public Works Department for review.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Dean, do you have more bids?
I do. This is the Webster Avenue Pump Station.
Okay.
So if you recall, there were some modifications to the specifications for that project, and we needed to bid for those upgrades.
So the following, following bid opening is for the Webster Pump Station. The first bid is from Northeast Earth Mechanics, LLC, and they're based out of Pittsfield, New Hampshire. And the second bid, Webster Pump Station, is from Albanese, that's A-L-B-A-N-E-S-E, D and S, Inc., from Drackett, Massachusetts. And the total bid is $4,916,750. That's 4, 916750. And this is from De Felice, D-E-F-E-L-I-C-E Corporation, from Drackett, Massachusetts. And the total bid is $4,902,345. That's 4, 902345. Seeing no other bids, I would entertain a motion to forward these bids for the Webster Pump Station, the Public Works Department, for review.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Dean, sorry, Julie, from my reach. Thank you.
One more.
Next order of business this evening, we have a bid award for the Kingston Road project. This has been ongoing, and I'm excited to move this forward. This was after a careful review of the bids that the board forwarded several meetings ago. First ask if there are any questions from the board. I'm doing the memo. There are no other questions or comments. Based on the public works recommendation, I would entertain a motion to award the bid to the low bidder, DBU Construction, Inc., in the amount of 3 million, I'm sorry, $1,589,205, and to further authorize the town manager to execute the amended project agreement.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have our public comment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There are two other pieces of the puzzle for Kingston Road. One is the construction phase engineering.
You're right.
CMA engineers, and then the construction phase engineering on the ground to Wright Pierce is the recommendation for that.
Yep, I missed that. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to award the construction phase engineering to CMA engineers in the amount of $23,465, and further authorize the town manager to execute the amended project agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And I would also entertain a motion to award the construction phase engineering to Wright Pierce in the amount of $110,027.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You got one more?
Which one?
The amended project agreement. There's a recommendation.
Where am I seeing that?
It's not an HDOT. Recommend the amended project.
Oh.
To just allow.
Authorize the town manager.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the amended project agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Now we can move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with the select board on anything they'd like to comment about. We do ask that if your comments are relative to an agenda item, you wait till that agenda item comes up. So I will pause, and if you have any comment, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I'm Jay Garnett. I live at Two Stony Water Road here in Exeter, and I represent a group of concerned residents about the dam. So we're the Friends of Exeter River. And here's a little bit of history. March 2018, the Pickpocket Dam was reclassified for the Department of Environmental Services from a low-risk dam to a high-hazard dam based on the results of a dam breach analysis conducted by BHB of Bedford. Specifically, their model predicted that one residential house would be flooded during a 100-year flood even if the dam were to fail, and assessed that the dam and abutments didn't have sufficient capacity to prevent this. VHB of Bedford, New Hampshire, was subsequently hired by the Town of Exeter to conduct a feasibility study to determine how to address dam deficiencies. Their feasibility study is ongoing and anticipated to be completed in early 2024. In September '23, preliminary partial findings of the ongoing VHB study were presented to the Town of Exeter's River Advisory Committee, who then voted to recommend that the select board apply for an NOAA grant for the enhancing fish passage via pickpocket dam removal in a meeting that lacked any clear public notice and which had no public attendees. The Town of Exeter Select Board voted then to apply for the NOAA grant to fund 100% of the dam removal, as well as to support the dam removal as a preferred option. Based on this recommendation, Exeter then submitted the grant. Communication concern. Brentwood Select Board, the Brentwood Conservation Commission, and the Exeter Swampscout River Local Advisory Committee and Exeter Brentwood residents, including abutters along the river, that's me, were not notified that there would be a meeting in which consequential decisions would be made, and those decisions would be recommended to the select board. Active attempts to inquire if the VHB study would even be presented at the September meeting were answered with a misleading way that disguised the purpose of the meeting. The study presented by the River Advisory Committee, Exeter Select Board leaned towards dam removal. Other options, such as modifying the dam, were shown, but the focus was on getting approval for the removal of the dam. VHB estimated the normal river water levels would be significantly affected, dropping up to about 10 feet from current impoundment levels, impacting fish, wildlife, and local environment in ways that have not been studied at the time of the vote. So basically, what's happening is that, and I've said this before, I live on a cliff. My house is built into the side of the cliff. If this water level goes down, I'm worried what's going to happen. My neighbors are all fishermen, and they paddleboard and they canoe. This is going to have a significant impact, and nobody was notified. Has Brentwood been notified yet of the meeting that's going to be happening for the public, February 27th? Anybody in Brentwood?
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Yeah, so Brentwood has not been notified yet, but it is January 8th, so we do plan on notifying them well in advance of the meeting.
And the rest of the abutters along the river?
In Exeter, we are going to make efforts to notify people.
Okay. There have been a lot of questions about how this has happened, how residents were not notified. People, specifically the abutters, Brentwood, Exeter, anyone along the river really hasn't been notified, and I think that the studies were done after the fact, in other words, it was pretty much decided with the grant that this was the way the town was going to go without putting into the, forgive me, without putting into the grant all the studies that needed to happen. So we didn't, the studies that needed to happen came after the decision. So there's a problem. All right. Well, anyway, here's my deal. I'm looking for more transparency. I'd like to see some more information get out to the public, press release, something, something so people can actually go to this meeting and know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, just two things. The only thing that was decided was to apply for a grant. So as I've said before, both here and at River Advisory Meetings, I believe the last one was in December, in order for anything to happen, there will have to be public hearings. There will be public hearings. The only thing that this board did was to authorize the Public Works Department to move forward with applying for a grant. So the feasibility study will be public sometime at the end of February. Mr. Dean indicated that notification will be given. We will be incredibly transparent, and if, and I'm saying if very strongly, if the direction seems to be going towards removal of a dam, there will be public hearings and public input before any decisions can be made. Again, this is public comment, so I don't want to get into any more deliberation, but my offer still stands from the last time you made public comment. You have my email address, and I'd be happy to meet with you sometime and talk about your concerns offline. concerns offline. Thank you.
I did want to ask, though.
Could you just ask at the mic? Thanks.
If the report can be made public before the meeting on the 27th, because my group of people would love to be able to look at it and be able to ask thoughtful, meaningful questions versus just a generic blanket of we're not happy.
Understood.
Will that be listed on the website, or where would that be?
Mr. Dean, I'll defer to you. I don't know the timing of when the study will be received or when the meeting will be posted.
And I'd actually have to defer that question to Public Works, and I don't know if Paul can answer the timing of the report release.
And Mr. Velazquez, if you don't have that information readily available, we can get back to the public.
I don't have the planned date that we would have that, but we plan on putting it on the town website, and it will be prior to the public information meeting on the feasibility study.
Okay.
It won't be many weeks beforehand. We will get a draft of it internally and go over it with the funding partners first.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Selectman Chartran?
I just want to reiterate what the chair has said. For the second time, you have said that the fix is in on this, and it's not. We applied for a grant. We made a decision to apply for a grant that would defray the cost of removal. No decision has been made. We've received no final report. So I personally would appreciate it if you would stop saying that a decision has been made, because it hasn't. Thank you.
Mr. Velazquez.
The new Public Works Director has a list of the projects, and he's got the notes there, and I should have checked with him before coming up here. But right now, the plan is to have the report on the website on the February 20th.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration, Mr. Chair, in allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Selectman Chartran. Any other public comment, please, sir? You state your name and address.
My name is Bob Collier. I live at 9 Conny Road, Exeter, New Hampshire.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I want to say that the dam was built for a purpose, and it served a purpose for many years. And in my own experience, I've been able to, I'm at the end of my street, and I'm able to walk out into Deion Jones's property that way, towards the river, where the deer go. And there's alder there, and the deer water there because of the water that's backed up because of the dam. And I would like the town to reconsider their position on taking this dam down. I would like them to actually repair it. I guess there's been some damage done in the course of things. Not elevate it, just repair. If you elevate it, there's more pressure created against the dam. Just leave it the way it is, leave well enough alone, let the dam stay, make it functional. That would be my request for the town to do. You know, it's, people go there, and it's used quite a bit in that area. And I don't see, I don't see any reason for the dam to be eliminated because of a possibility of what's been proposed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comment. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Saunders. I live at 167 Pickpocket Road in Brentwood.
Can I just ask you to hold for one minute? Because you live in Brentwood, we need to vote to allow you to speak? Because you're not a resident of Exeter?
Sir, I pay property taxes in Exeter.
No, I understand. Is there any objection?
No.
Go ahead, sir, please.
Sure. One of the, one of the features of wetlands, which is the area backed up behind this dam, is it acts as a very effective filter for water quality. And as a person with a well, I have a lot of concern about the loss of the wetlands and the problems that that may create for water quality for not just myself, but for hundreds of people that have wells that are filtered by this wetland. And to me, that's a very big concern in addition to the, you know, the recreation opportunities that are there, and also the wildlife habitat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment this evening? We do have two people online, so I'd like to give them an opportunity to raise their hand if they wish to comment. Seeing no hands, I will close the public comment. This will be a nice way to segue into our recognition this evening. They say that if you wait long enough, great things will be brought to you, and after a long, long wait, we are very excited to introduce our new Public Works Director who started last week, Mr. Stephen Cronin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the board. I've been in the field of public works for 20 or so years, most recently with the Town of Westford for the last 14 years, and a number of roles recently as Director of Public Works for the last three and a half years. As Chair alluded to earlier, it's certainly been an exciting start to my tenure here with the first substantial snowfall of the season this past weekend, but I've been very impressed with the DPW operation as a whole. The Town Manager's Office and the DPW team have been extremely welcoming and helpful. They've all had a lot of great things to say about the town, and I certainly look forward to getting to know you all and the community better. As you can see from some of the agenda items that you just recently discussed, DPW has a long list of projects currently in the works, and I'm certainly excited to jump right in and help move those forward.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome.
Just welcome. Welcome to Exeter. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Very excited to have you. Thank you, Stephen. Okay. We have our regular meeting minutes of December 18th, 2023 in our pack-up, but Mr. Dean, next Tuesday, will we have the minutes to review for our special meeting that was December 28th?
The 28th will be next week, yes.
Terrific, fantastic. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the regular meeting minutes of December 18th? Okay, I'd ask the board first if there are any amendments or revisions. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board regular meeting minutes of December 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Some motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five zero. We met Madison Bailey at our last Select Board meeting. She's started as our new health officer, replacing James Murray. Mr. Dean, do we have any formal paperwork for Madison's appointment, or just a motion?
That's already been signed, so all you'd need to do tonight is just appoint her as health officer.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Madison Bailey as the Town of Exeter Health Officer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you. So we'll jump right into, oh, we had our, do you want to take up Mr. Lemos this evening? We interviewed, the board interviewed Mark Lemos downstairs at the beginning of this meeting. Mr. Lemos has applied to be an alternate on the zoning board of adjustment, and also is a member of the Energy Committee. So I would first take up the zoning board of adjustment. I would entertain a motion to appoint Mark Lemos as an alternate member of the zoning board of adjustment with a term to expire April 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five zero. And I would further entertain a motion to appoint Mark Lemos to the Energy Committee. There is no term.
No term.
There you go.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five zero, and we're very thankful for Mark. Our first discussion item this evening is a continuing discussion on the operating budget, and we also have a draft of the warrant articles that we will be reviewing next Tuesday evening in this room at 7:00 PM, which will be the bond and warrant article budget hearing. So, Mr. Dean, did you have any highlights before we jump into continuing discussion of the budget?
So I'd just say, I wanted to mention that we do have some department managers in the audience tonight that are available to answer questions if the board has them. I think we have had a fairly lengthy budget process at this point, and we are looking again at a budget that is, the increase is 8.13% over FY '23. One of the central themes of this budget has been the fact that it's a people budget. We have worked hard to retain and incentivize employees through this budget. We're also faced with some fixed cost increases due to inflation, pretty much across the board, I would say, in terms of expenses and employee benefits. Health insurance in particular is up 10% this year. So there are some budgetary challenges. The debt service budget is also up close to $600,000, and that's based on approved projects. The solar array being one of them. And one of the things that you'll see in the warrant articles that we're recommending is the creation of a revolving fund.
Yep.
To bring the revenue in and expend out of the same fund, so we can track that solar array and make it the full project that we expect it to be.
Okay. And I note there are five bond articles. Police station and fire substation, the school street area design reconstruction, Webster pump station, surface water treatment plan, design and engineering, and the excess construction proceeds, police vehicle purchase, and principal payments and outstanding bond issues.
Right, so I'll speak to that briefly, and that is the result of, the Finance Department has done some excellent work going back and looking at previous bond issues that the town has, has made, and basically, it's, when you do a capital project, it's not uncommon to go out and borrow money, and then actually, if you're within budget, have some excess left over at the end. And these are dollars that were actually left over from the 2011 Great Dam design, the water sewer line replacement project that we did in 20, I believe it was 2010, and in 2012 for the wastewater treatment design, and also JD Hill Utilities. So we've had $213,970 left over, and so we are, we've worked with Bond Council and through the Finance Office, and we are looking at recommending reassigning those excess proceeds and buying two police cruisers with those, and also applying the remaining unused bond proceeds, which is about $94,000, to the Great Dam Removal Bond, which we are still paying principal and interest on. So that's good news, and that will save taxpayers' dollars by doing that.
Any questions from the board on any of the bond articles? I'd just like to, if we can move from the bond articles to the warrant articles, I just want to flag one, and this was discussed extensively during the budget process, and that is the Capital Reserve Fund for Parks Improvement, which historically has been requested annually at $100,000, and Parks and Rec Department has utilized those funds each year to improve our parks. And I think that when you listen to the presentation from the Recs and Park Director, there's no shortage of work that's done annually or is needed. I think the request came in, or the draft was $50,000 from town staff, I think, more or less, Mr. Dean, you categorize it as just sort of trying to bring something down. The BRC debated that extensively. There were members of the BRC who felt it should be, remain at $100,000. The funds are spent annually. There's an ongoing need for parks improvement, and I think that some of the BRC subscribe to the theory that I do, is once you take something away, it's awful hard to put it back. They settled on a compromise of $75,000, which is where it stands now, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that annually it has been at $100,000, and perhaps we may want to think about that this week before we get into the budget hearing next We have one citizen's petition so far, Mr. Dean?
We have one so far, yes.
Okay, and that is for the rug property, based on the conversation we had publicly December 18th, correct?
Correct.
Any questions on bond or warrant articles from the board? We'll bring it back to the budget discussion we had December 18th. Mr. Dean, you had made a recommendation to use ARPA funds in the amount of $50,000 for the Tree Committee, taking that out of the general budget and using ARPA funds to buy the new equipment. We had talked about using $150,000 from the road aid initially for paving, and then you and staff increased that to $250,000. If I remember correctly, conversation that we had at our last meeting was that that doesn't leave us with much of a balance, and moving forward, our Finance Director confirmed that we can't, we shouldn't expect some of the high figures in road aid in the future. So we talked about maybe tabling it December 18th and thinking about it, and maybe discussing it further, whether we wanted it at 150, 250, or someplace in between. So I would open that up to the board for additional conversation. Mr. Chartran?
I am looking at the Swayze Traffic Paving portion, the $85,000. I did read our citizen volunteer, Jennifer Martell's memo. It did have an impact on me, and I'm wondering whether, we are going to allocate $85,000 for creating some kind of solution for access to Swayze Park, correct?
That's what we've discussed to date.
Yeah.
For the paving piece of the project.
Right.
Yeah. But we haven't decided when or how to do that yet, correct?
Not as of yet, no. We have a proposal from Ironwood Design that we're looking at right now to help us through that process.
I think as far as we went the last time we discussed this was that we were going to wait until the springtime, and I believe we also had the subcontractor that's doing work on the siphon had expressed interest in helping us out as well. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So I think the earliest would be the spring.
So it's still kind of up in the air, and we haven't really decided what to do.
Correct.
Do we need to have that $85,000 allocated? Is there a decision point to be made tonight, or could that be restored to road aid to address your concern? I'm just floating this. I have no idea what the moving parts are.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's part of the road aid now, and we would use that.
Is there, there's not a decision being made in the town meeting process?
No.
About that $85,000?
Okay.
That answers my question.
And there's no timeline to spend the road aid either.
Yep.
Now, on the ARPA funds, there is a timeline to either spend or commit, so I think that the, as we discussed at the last meeting, the tree equipment, I think that's perfect for the, for the ARPA funds, and then that gives us a balance of, and that's with the Planet Playground, that gives us a balance of $122,000, almost $123,000 in ARPA funds, correct?
Right.
And what is the deadline for spending that remaining?
Committed by 2025, committed in 26.
Correct.
Got it. And the Planet Playground article at 595 reflects that $60,000, or no?
No, the 595 is for the $60,000 for.
Purchase of the property.
The property.
Got it. So the 60 is towards actually putting some kind of playground solution there.
No, the 60 is purchasing the land.
It's part of purchasing.
And the warrant article to which you refer is part of a grant that if we receive that would go towards actually building or rebuilding. And I think we've got, you know, we have, we definitely have more flexibility with ARPA funding in terms of what the Select Board determines to use it for. The road aid is pretty finite as to what that money's to be used for, but again, there's no, there's no deadline to use it.
So less flexibility, but no deadline. And ARPA, more flexibility, but a tighter deadline.
Correct.
So, may I ask?
Please, yes.
So Jen Martell sent us that email. Where will that stand right now? Is that going to the Department of Public Works to be vetted and looked at and look at those? Is that going to Department of Public Works to be vetted and look at, and look at the logistics of what she has suggested? Just because we've got some time, I'd like to give it some careful consideration, and if we need to set some money aside, you know, to keep that, at least that portion in there, because I don't know.
So if that email hasn't been forwarded, it should?
Right.
To Public Works, and I think if I'm understanding the question, I mean, the 85,000 that's earmarked here is for paving, it's not for any...
Design.
Any design or anything like that. It has to be for the actual, whatever we decide to do.
Yes, no, I'm fine with that. It's, I know, when Jen talked to me about it, she's concerned about the current design of the paving, so I just wanted to make sure that at least we're vetting that out, and that's all.
And the next steps too, is once Public Works has had an opportunity to review everything, we need to invite the Swayze trustees back?
Yes.
To a meeting and continue our conversation and move forward, but for the sake of the funding, I guess it's more the paving at 250, and what that leaves us for such a low balance on road aid, and knowing that we could have, like we've had in the past, you know, something could come up.
Yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable at 150 on that. That would give us a balance of 110,000 instead of 10,000.
Right.
That's low.
And Mr. Dean, can you remind the board, which you reminded us of the last time we discussed this on the 18th, if we were, the difference, I guess, in the default between whether it's 150 utilized under road aid or the 250 as you proposed?
Right, so right now, the default, the difference between the default and the operating budget is 488,186, and by using 150 in paving, that would close that gap to 338,186. Obviously, 250 would reduce it by another 100,000 to 238,186.
And it's not part of our packet this evening, but I know Mr. Stevens had worked up a historical timeline for us, I think, going back the last six or seven years, and even if we took the 150,000 off, that was still within the average of where we've been since, what, 2018, 2017, give or take?
Give or take, I would say.
Not counting the COVID year.
You, not counting 2021, you would be pretty close at that, to that number.
Any thoughts?
No.
I think you've covered my questions.
I look towards Selectman Shartran, who likes to do his math on a napkin, and I'm peering over at your napkin.
Yeah. I guess I would be in favor of moving the amount we're going to take out of road aid to reduce the paving budget. I would reduce that to 150. That would be, that would be what I would be leaning towards. I was kind of leaning there last meeting. I'm still leaning there.
It may help, and I, I'm going to look at the finance director while I say this, but the $50,000 for the tree equipment is currently in the highway budget under capital outlay. So if that were to come out and go to ARPA, then you're going to reduce the operating budget by 50,000. So in terms of the gap, because the 50,000 is not included in the default, you're going to come down by using 150 in paving money, you'd be coming down to 288 as a gap. So Cory's nodding, so we agree.
So that, that makes it definite. Are you looking for a motion? Or we haven't really approved any?
I actually, I would like a motion if that's, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, just to...
Do you want to go through?
Give it some direction?
Go through all of the, the ARPA for the tree and Planet Playground, as well as the road aid?
I'll, I think...
And the police cruisers?
I think that would be great. That would be very helpful.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to expend $50,000 from ARPA funds for the tree committee's new equipment?
So moved.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. $60,000 from ARPA funds towards Planet Playground, $120,000 from the unused construction fund for the police cruisers, $85,000 from road aid to go towards the Swayze traffic paving portion, $150,000 from road aid to go towards highway paving.
And I'll, I'll make that motion.
And I will second it.
Any discussion?
And just to be clear, that would put us at a gap between the proposed budget and the default budget of 288,186. I'm sorry, what was that?
He said, take it out of the operating, the 50,000 and the 150,000.
Just to be clear, now we're taking the 50 for tree equipment out of operating, and we're taking the 150 out of paving, out of operating as well.
Do you want that?
Do you want that in a separate motion, or do you?
Separate.
We'll do that in a separate motion?
Yes.
All right, but the gap, so I'm clear in my mind, is 288,186 when we make that other motion?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, then I'm good. I just wanted to clarify.
There is a motion, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. I would entertain a motion...
So you'd be reducing...
I'm gonna stop for a second.
Reducing the highway capital outlay budget by 50,000?
How about some account numbers?
That would be better. Do you have those, Mr. Dean?
To use the, to use Chairman Kelly's formula from the BRC.
So this, this would be account number 57006.
That's for the, for the paving?
That is for the capital outlay equipment. That's for the tree equipment, the 50,000.
Capital outlay equipment?
Yes, in the highway budget.
Yep.
And then the paving line item is right near there, that is 55251, and that would be reduced to 550,000 from 700. And as we stated earlier, the 150 will come from the road aid.
That's from the highway fund?
To make that whole, yes.
And?
Highway budget.
The capital outlay equipment, that's a reduction of 50, or?
Reduction of 50, because we're, what we'll do is we'll pay 50 for that from ARPA, up to 50 from ARPA, per your last motion.
And while I'm on a roll, would you like another motion for the 166,240 for Kingston Road?
I was, I was...
I was actually, I was actually going to include that in the last one, so let's do that first. I would entertain a motion to expend 166,240 from the sidewalk fund towards the Kingston Road project?
So moved, second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
May I approach the board? Talking about paving and stuff like that?
In a moment, we're just gonna, we're deliberating here, and I'd be happy to have you comment. I would entertain a motion to reduce line item 57006 from the highway budget, capital outlay equipment by $50,000.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And I would entertain a motion to reduce from the highway budget line item 55251, $150,000, $700,000, 550, I'm gonna start that over. I would entertain a motion to reduce highway budget line item 55251 from 700,000 to 550,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Sir, did you ever comment? And just state your name and address, thanks.
And I live on Carney Road, and the town has agreed to plow and plow Carney Road where I live, and the agreement was made a few years ago, excuse me, that they would come down twice a year and take care of the road. And what happens on this road is when it rains, it creates potholes and some, a serious rut at one, at one point. And, and what it also creates is, it creates a berm at the very end, so if fire equipment or police or ambulance or whatever had to get into the property next to me, they can't because of the dirt that's there. And I'm, I would wonder if you could put out a proposal to see if you could put pavement down. It's a, we live on a right-of-way, the town got the property from The Simpsons, so the town basically inherited that road.
If you could send Mr. Dean and me something in writing, either an email or a letter or whatnot, we will get that to the Public Works Department, and we can get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget before we move on? Great, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shartran.
Well, so you put a marker down on the parks improvement budget. That could still be decided at our public hearing, correct?
That's when we would deliberate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, did you want to come talk to us again about the audit RFP?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I was before you in the fall, or I guess about a month ago, with three bid proposals for audit services for 2024. We vetted all three candidates. They were Plodzik and Sanderson out of Concord, Vashon, Clucan Company out of Manchester, and Clifton Larson and Allison Allen out of Massachusetts, a national firm with a Massachusetts presence. The town manager, myself, and my staff met with each of the candidates, had great conversations, I then followed up with their references. Each of them were, were good candidates, it was a tough decision, but in the end, we are recommending going with Plodzik and Sanderson. Each of the bids were generally in line with what we pay for audit services now, and Plodzik is right in line with what we pay now. So that is the recommendation for 2024. We structured the RFP such that it would be for one year, and we'd see how it went, and then with a three-year potential contract after that.
And who makes that determination?
We do as a town.
But who's authorized? Does that come back to the board, or is that something you do internally?
We can bring it back to the board, yeah.
Don't have, I'm just asking to...
Yeah, I think we would bring it back to the board.
Great.
Yeah, I wanted to add too, that we've had the same auditor for the last 15 years. This is the 16th year now, so in terms of just making a changeover, and I want to be transparent and say that we have had some issues this year with, not the material piece of the audit, but the timeliness of getting the audit when we want it. And we've had multiple conversations with Markham, our auditor, about those issues, and we're still working on it, to be perfectly blunt, and we expect some results soon, but we'll keep the board apprised as to when we can expect the '22 audit. But I would concur with the finance director's recommendation that Plodzik and Sanderson represented well and will do a good job for us.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion to award the audit services for the Town of Exeter in 2024 to Plodzik and Sanderson P.A. with the option of coming back to the select board at the end of 2024 to review possible three-year option.
So moved, second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good night.
Good night, chief.
Mr. Sharples, you're up. Nice to see you.
See ya. Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm here tonight to request that the select board authorize the town manager to execute easement deed with Unitil Energy Systems, Inc., to install three poles on our property at the crossroad landfill to support the solar array project. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about the larger project, but I have been, I already talked with the town manager, and I'm having, we're gonna have revision come in, and myself, to give a more comprehensive update in, within the next couple months. Hopefully, we do expect permits soon, and we expect construction to start in the spring, anticipated, but we, I'll give you a more thorough update at that time. But tonight, Unitil did an interconnection study, as you may know, the three-phase power that we need to bring up, we need to bring three-phase power up to the site to connect into the solar array. It goes, I think, one or two poles up crossroad right now from Kingston. It's along Kingston Road, and then it goes up two poles and stops. That's the end of the three-phase power. They're continuing that three-phase power up about maybe, you know, 600, 700 feet up to the driveway, and then there's a map in your package that show where it kind of bangs a left, and there's five poles that go onto the property before it goes underground to the transformer pad for the site. Unitil will own and maintain the first three of those poles. The last two will be our responsibility as part of the solar array, but we need an easement because they're gonna be on, you know, they requested an easement, this is their language they sent, and they would need an easement. I did, to install and maintain those three poles. I did provide a motion that is a little broader than, does include the easement, but is a little broader, because generally when we come and do projects, we like accept a grant, and we do a motion to authorize the town manager, but this went through the warrant process and went to the voters, so we've never been before you to ask that, so I broadened the motion.
Okay.
In the event, you know, there's other, you know, whatever amendments within, you know, or documents that he would need to sign to complete the project within the available funding. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sharples? Then seeing none, excuse me, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager or his designee to execute any documents, including the easement deed to Unitil Energy Systems, Incorporated, and take any and all actions necessary to complete the solar array project within the available funding.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Our last discussion item is truly that. Excuse me. So follow up to...
Yes, in case he wants it, just in case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So follow up to something that the board's been working on for several years, and that's looking at the makeup of our boards and committees. Previously, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, who served then, worked with me in the subcommittee. We made some recommendations that we put together in a formal memo that we've given the town manager after the board reviewed and approved. And then about a month and a half ago, excuse me, Selectman Shartran agreed to continue working with me on that subcommittee, and we sat down and we looked at all of the boards and committees, the makeup of them, the vacancies, and we just went through each one and tried to find any committee or board that might need some help in terms of meeting a quorum. We looked at attendance and so forth. So we have a couple of recommendations. There's only one, I think, that we really need to consider, excuse me, there's only one we need to consider action this evening, the rest can be... The rest can be, um, we can discuss, um, further. And the reason we need to, um, consider action this evening is because it will need to go on the warrant. And that's relative to the Water and Sewer Committee. Presently, uh, the makeup of the Water and Sewer Committee are seven voting members, including a Select Board member. You would need, uh, four people to meet the quorum. And I know, I think you can attest to that, that that's been difficult.
It has been difficult.
So... We, we talked about two different options, Selectwoman Shartrand and I. One was to reduce the Water and Sewer Committee to three people and maybe have some alternates. That would include a Select Board member continuing to be a voting member. Or to decrease it to five members, uh, but increasing the number of Select Board members who could vote to two. I don't know if you wanted to elaborate on that before?
Yeah, I, I prefer the latter option. I think, uh, three's a tight number and, um, five is better. And to have two, given the importance of Water and Sewer, um, for the town and for this board, uh, having two Select Board members makes sense to me. There's two Select Board representatives who are voting members. You know, pretty sure those Select Board members are going to show up. We're pretty sure Select, uh, Chairman Kelly will show up. So you're kind of locking in, uh, a quorum right there. And that's why I favor the latter option.
Now, historically, Mr. Dean, the Water and Sewer Committee was comprised of three members in its origin. Am I correct?
Yes, when, uh, when I started in 2005, the Water Sewer Committee was actually a three-member board. Advisory committee appointed by the Select Board. And then it went through some different iterations and that led to the 2011 town meeting vote that actually reestablished the Water Sewer Advisory Committee at seven members to include a Select Board member.
And, and if the board were to consider the latter, uh...
The five members.
The five members with two Select Board members. Is that something we're able to do? It's not a quorum of the Select Board?
You can do it. I mean, there's not a precedent for a board that in, in the town, appointed by this board, that has two, two Select Board members sitting on it. But it can be done. It's not, not a, there's no technical impediment to doing that.
And technically, the Select Board, uh, historically reviewed the requests for abatements and that was delegated by the Select Board to the Water and Sewer Committee, correct?
Yeah, the board are the Water Sewer Commissioners for the town. So you, you sit in the highest level of authority when it comes to water sewer issues.
As the Select Board, current Select Board Rep to the Water and Sewer Committee, what are your thoughts, Selectwoman Cowan?
I mean, my thoughts are, I agree with you that it is a really important committee. I think that, um, often what the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee does is advise the Select Board. So there is this part that's like, it, we would be taking a subset of our body and, you know, having a pre-discussion before we have the full discussion. And I don't know how useful, like... But I also, you know, I, I think that I am not eager to go back to having full discussions here around abatements. Yeah.
I agree.
So I, so I guess like that, you know, there is, there is such valuable expertise that is happening and going on there that I don't want to absolve all of the duties back here. I don't think that that's smart.
That's right. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, I think that's, um, a fine solution. Uh, and I think having two Select Board members on the Advisory Committee gives us the opportunity as boards of, as a whole, I guess, to be, to have the backup and whatever representatives are there to explain, uh, to the public, especially, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. And also to give the, um, the Water and Sewer Committee members some backup, I guess, for the decisions they're making on abatements because that is really, um, has been our job and we've given it and can consider it a subcommittee, um, which has, can have the same authority.
Good point.
Yeah.
Good point. And then, of course, future boards annually set up a backup Select Board member so that you'd be somewhat guaranteed that you'd have two members?
Right.
We'd have two Select Board members and then two backup Select Board members.
That could work. So is a consensus of the Select Board here tonight to have town manager draft a warrant article?
Yeah.
For next week? Mr. Dean, that would be for reducing voting members from seven to five with two of those five members being Select Board members?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Board's comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. And then the other two, um, boards and committees that we, we were making a recommendation was to merge. And I think the timing for this, you may agree with me, the timing of this is perfect. And I believe the Energy Committee's already had conversations about this, as has the Sustainability Committee, but merging the two, um, into one? And, um, obviously inviting members of both committees to be in that one committee?
Yep, um, I, I only know the Energy Committee side of it, but, um, when we were in the discussion, what it was is that yes, we have similar interests, but there are particular routes to take to get to the same end. And that the Energy Committee can be, or those members that want to participate in a certain way, um, can be a subcommittee of that entire body. Does the Sustainability Committee have terms?
Yes.
And the Energy Committee does not?
We could eliminate the terms.
Yeah. Minus one.
What are, what are the Sustainability Committee's thoughts, Shartrand?
Um, the last time we met, which I believe was at the beginning of December, they were, um, considering it. They had not affirmed that they wanted to do it. And I think the next step was they wanted to actually set up a meeting with the Energy Committee to talk about what that would look like if they were to decide to roll in with the Energy Committee. So I would say, um, they're considering it, but they haven't decided.
Okay. The, um, staff to both committees is Kristin Murphy, who is Conservation and Sustainability. So I think that, that works. I think it just makes sense. Whether it's a, I like your idea of, of one committee, Energy Committee, and then the Sustainability Committee being a subcommittee to, to maybe work on...
Yeah, I think there's crossover and there's also good communication because they have currently different audiences and to get the message the same, you know, what the resources that we're using on either, either energy or, um, other sustainable practices, conserva, water conservation, et cetera, that, um, uh, we have audiences that will hear the message, both messages at one time.
And my vision is once they're consolidated, if that's the route we go and Kristin can work with the entire group to maybe draft a new charge that would include the Sustainability Committee's mission.
Right, that's what I was thinking. I mean, would the Energy Committee be able to have a conversation with the Sustainability Committee on what it would look like? That they're not, this isn't their suggestion, right? So wouldn't Kristin want to maybe come up with a draft of what it would look like?
I think that would be a wise next step. Ultimately, it's going to be the board's going to decide.
The next step, if I'm advocating for the Sustainability Advisory Committee, is that that meeting gets set up. So that should be the next step, I think, in their minds. Because they're not sure they want to do it, so.
And I understand, the only thing I was suggesting was that maybe Kristin draft up what it might look like.
For, for that meeting?
To, a draft for what the Energy and Sustainability merger would look like.
Yeah, I think the Sustainability Advisory Committee would, and, and I'm just sticking on this because this is what they were talking about. They would like to take a meeting before this goes any further.
Okay. I, and my understanding was it was, they wanted to see what it was going to look like and Energy couldn't, I mean, they could talk about it, I guess, but...
I, I think it would be prudent if maybe Kristin sat down with the Chair of the Energy Committee and the Chair of the Sustainability Committee, perhaps Selectwoman Gilman and Selectwoman Shartrand, without the entire committee and just kind of look at how we envision this.
Sure, that could be a first step.
Because I, I think the Energy...
If all parties are willing.
The Energy Committee, um, has been one of the most productive committees, at least the last eight or nine years. And, and I think that this would be advantageous to the Sustainability Advisory Committee to, number one, jump on that momentum. But also, I know Sustainability Committee has had, um, difficulties with a quorum to the point where they were going to meet every other month, I think, or at least...
They have decided to meet every other month. I think they've, they've licked the quorum issue. And they have a chair. So they made a lot of progress in the December meeting. I was really impressed with how they dug in. So let's give them a chance to, uh, to have the meeting that they're asking for before we push this any further.
I think one of the differences between the two committees too is that Sustainability meets at night.
That can be worked out.
No, that's why you have the two committees. I know the Energy Committee meeting in the daytime has been very convenient for the current membership. But would, will it be convenient in the future is the question. I have to ask for a couple of other committees too, so.
And I think you also have to look at staff and the resources that we utilize. I mean, we're asking Kristin to, to go to two meetings a month that, that could be tackled in, in one meeting because they're doing a lot of the same work in overlaps.
Just to be clear, personally, I'm in favor of it. But I also have to advocate for the committee that I'm a rep to, so. And then there was definitely a sense of they wanted to reconnoitre and explore this before they committed to it.
So, Mr. Dean, if you could, um, if you could sit down with Kristin Murphy and task her with putting together how she envisions this. I know that, um, I know I've talked with her, I think you both have talked with her. And I think she's in favor of this. So maybe she could draft something, invite the chairs of both committees, as well as Selectwoman Gilman, Selectwoman Shartrand, and you can report back to the board?
The Energy Committee has a meeting this week, so I'll let them know that this will be in the works. The Chair will, uh, Kristin and the Chair will be getting in more information.
Okay. You can do the same too?
So we can work.
I'll check in, I'll check in with Chairman Zigman.
Great. Thank you. And then the last one we looked at was the Heritage Committee. And again, that was because of quorum issues. And we were looking at either, again, decreasing the number of voting members or, which I think the Select Board can do. Or, or if we merged with the HDC, that would require a warrant article.
Uh, the Heritage Commission is also regulated by RSA, so we would, either solution would have to go on a warrant article.
Even if we're decreasing the number? Because I believe the...
No, the number is seven. And we, decreasing it to five would be very helpful.
Is it seven or up to seven?
Up to seven. It's up to seven. Right now, we have seven.
Right.
That's what was voted on.
So if it's up to seven in the article, does the board have that room to decrease it to five?
No, it has to be defined. So we, you know, we have said seven.
Okay.
The RSA says up to seven, so we could have choo, chosen four, five.
And that was a warrant article?
Yes.
Are you in favor of a warrant article this year to decrease it to five? Or up to five?
I would, I believe that would be a great relief to members. Uh, yes, I am.
Any thoughts?
Um, I do have a thought. There is a letter in our packet addressing this. Has that been sort of taken into account in terms of moving forward?
I've read the letter and, um, Selectwoman Cowan and I have met with the author of the letter several times. But once, we've corresponded several times. What did we mean, last year or the year before?
I can't remember.
But, uh, we've had ongoing dialogue with the author. And we know, we know his point of view. Okay. And I took great interest in reading that this weekend because I thought the timing was, was good. Yeah. And I think some of his, his points were wilting. So is that a consensus of the board, that Mr. Dean write a warrant article? Are you clear on that?
Yeah, yeah, well, I have one clarifying question. I, I'd imagine that, um, and I just want to be clear that the revised Heritage Commission of up to five people would include a Select Board representative, a Planning Board representative, and an HDC representative.
Right, and so it would be...
So there would be two at-large members essentially and the three...
Two members of the, of the president.
Three members would be of other boards. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that before I drafted something.
And I wouldn't say up to five, I would just say five.
Five.
And any alternates, Selectwoman Gilman?
Uh, yes, currently, I think we have designated four alternate positions.
I can tell you, I've got it written down.
There are five.
Wow.
Five alternate positions.
Yep, and they're all vacant presently.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And I think they always have been. I believe so, yes.
There's a lot more interest, uh, 11 years ago or whenever we started it than...
Okay.
Or more, actually.
Do you, is there a preferred number of alternates? Do you want to see like two alternates as an example? Or to preserve some, but not, maybe not have as, quite as many?
Uh, you know, off the top of my head, I'd say yes.
Okay.
Um, you know, if, there's never really a problem having alternates.
I mean, to the best of your knowledge, how long has the five vacancies been there? I can't remember the last time there were.
It's been a good four years, maybe.
Probably right.
We've never had alternates and it's been a good four years that we've struggled with having five, just five members. We also have to consider the Demolition Reviews Subcommittee, which is three people, but I think we can leave that the way it is. And also for your, we missed the December meeting because there was no quorum because no one showed up. There's some miscommunication. But we're discussing moving the meeting and the current board makeup would prefer to meet in the mornings. That's, that has nothing to do with the warrant article, that's just to let you know. And so we haven't, we'll be discussing it at the end of the month. I have my reservations, but, um...
Well, if I recall, part of the controversy, if you want to call it that, was, um, a question of maybe, maybe somewhat of a question of transparency, but more so, I think, um, not having a quorum, but continuing discussion of a discussion item with this gentleman that wrote the letter, if I'm recalling. In other words, there wasn't a quorum, but the meeting went on anyway and there was discussion. And I also would, would, um, continue to, I mean, this, this is a committee that should be televised.
It is?
No, no, I'm saying, but if it, even if it's morning or whenever, it's going to be televised.
Absolutely.
Five and three. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
Five members, three alternates.
Okay. And then, other than that, Selectwoman Shartrand, did I, did I recap our subcommittee meeting accurately?
You did. You did. It's another one of your super...
So, um, two warrant articles and then Kristin Murphy will begin her work with, uh, the great merger of 24.
Yeah. Quick question.
Yes.
If you add those two warrant articles, what are we up to for the warrant?
We don't know yet because citizens petitions can still be submitted as of tomorrow.
All right.
Setting aside citizens petitions, how many are we, are we as a town pushing forward?
Uh, we're up to 22, I believe.
I like that. That's tight. Nice job. Less is more.
Okay, all right. We good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Moving on to regular business, Madam Clerk, we have an abatement and several educational exemptions, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to abate taxes for map, map 110, lot 2, unit 94 in the amount of $318.68 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
And I would like to approve... Do you want me to do these all as one piece or each separately?
I think they're all different. I think they're all different.
Yep. I move to approve an educational exemption for MAP 86, Lot 11, Unit 11, for $110,600 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in, yes, Mr. Charter?
I'm just, so it's an educational exemption? I don't recall ever doing one of these. Can I just get a little bit of a background on what's involved here?
Mr. Dean, do you have?
Without naming names?
This is an educational institution that is qualified for an exemption under the RSA Reference of 7223(c). They filed an application with the town. It's been reviewed by the assessors, and they have determined that the school in question does qualify for the educational exemption.
Great, thank you.
That's without naming names.
Thank you.
Yeah, move to.
Is a motion, is a motion and second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I move to approve an educational exemption for MAP 86, Lot 11, Lot 11, Unit 12, in the amount of $109,300 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I move to approve an educational exemption, tax exemption for MAP 86, Lot 11, Unit 14, in the amount of $109,300 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
And I move to approve an educational tax exemption for MAP 86, Lot 11, Unit 15, in the amount of $110,600 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries? We do not have any permits or approvals this evening. Mr. Dean, the Town Manager's Report, please.
So the main items in my report are the following things. We have been working on town meeting preparations, as you know, drafting warrants and reviewing budgets, and that has been going well. I did have a brief update for the board that the Siphons drilling begins tomorrow. And we have notified people through our listserv that have subscribed to the service that, giving them more details on what, what to expect on the project. So fingers crossed, everything goes well. The Christmas tree pickup, we put some notice out today, a notice out today that it's delayed one week until next week. Typically, we do that this week, but due to the.
Notice came out late.
Due to the storm, we are delaying it.
I'm sitting out on the sidewalk now.
And.
I've asked to just bring them in.
We're in, we, we are asking people not to, not to put the trees out this week, so.
Okay, well, they might be blow, you'll see some blowing around High Street. I'll tell you that.
So, so that's just an, an update on that particular item. The community power rates, the CPCNH had a meeting a week ago, or a little bit more than a week ago, set the new rates. They're very favorable. We'll have an update for the board at a subsequent, at a next meeting. But we're excited about it, and we look forward to being able to offer more savings through the Community Power Program. I will also say that I am beginning to receive even more calls now from other communities that are interested in community power and getting on board with it. Obviously, we were in right at the, right at the first, the gate there, and it's worked out really well for us. The Parapoint Park closing happened with, without any issues on Friday after the board met on the 28th, so that is all set. The key is being held in the Town Manager's Office, so if there's a need to go out and see the property for any reason, we can facilitate that. PrimeX has weighed in, and since it's vacant land, they won't be adding it to the, they will add it automatically to the town's insurance, but they won't identify it separately. It's just, it's considered to be a piece of town property that they're going to put under our umbrella insurance.
And I'm sorry, excuse me, what are we going to do about fencing?
We're, that's in process right now. We're, we're looking into it.
Okay.
So we'll be back to you on that.
Okay.
Yep. And then just to add my thanks to DPW and also Police and Fire for their responses during the storm. I know Chief Ullman did depart the meeting, but he told me this morning that there were 10 accidents yesterday. So people need to be really cautious about their driving and moving around during these storms. And we're anticipating another storm this week, so, you know, stay safe. And, and thanks to our departments that are helping us through the processes.
Great, thank you.
Can I just have?
Please.
Call the Help See Report. Thank you.
Yes.
For including that. It, it went from 2022, there was 6,861 pounds, and 2023, it's 15,100, which is excellent. So thank you very much for that report. I did forward that information to Gwen English, who was the one who kind of asked us to try to reinvest and, and get awareness of this. She asked if there was any idea of what might have factored into it being that much more successful in one year.
Well, the bin, the bin at DPW at the transfer station, I think, played a large role in just making the, the program more accessible was the biggest reason of all that we were able to do more with it.
And DPW.
DPW's done a great job getting the word out, too, through the department. They've been telling just about everybody they can about it, and the word of mouth is really, really getting out there.
Well done, DPW, well done, Town of Exeter, for using this service. And let's see if we can maybe double it for next year. Thank you.
That's a good call. You're welcome.
While you have the floor, Selectwoman Belanger.
Yeah, I'll make a back.
With Select Committee reports.
Okay. So, we had housing, I'm not sure which one to start with first. Planning Board was December 28th, and there are going to be potentially two proposed amendments to the zoning. One is to try to clarify or, or make it more equitable, I guess is the word. ADU, for right now, ADUs, you have to have four parking spots, whereas a conversion, you only have to have two. So we've gone through the language in the ADUs, language in conversion, and are trying to, we made a recommendation to the Planning Board to try to simplify things a little bit. And then, Dart, um, sorry, I knew I was going to get it at this point at the end of the night. Dave Sharples, our planner, is also looking to expand the Mund, the mixed-use neighborhood development C2 district along Portsmouth Ave and Epping Road from meeting place to front row. So we had a meeting in December for housing, talked about it. Mr. Sharples made some red lines, language suggestions, brought it to the Planning Board at the 28th meeting. And then we talked, we had an early meeting this month for housing to go through that again. And all of them were, were going to be recommended this Thursday to the Planning Board except one. And that one, the Housing Advisory Committee, just felt it needed to be vetted a little bit more. But of course, it's an advisory committee. Planning Board can do as they please with it. And so there's going to be two public hearings on those two potential amendments. One is this Thursday, January 11th, and the second public hearing will be January 25th. And that is the conclusion.
Thank you.
Of my report.
Selectwoman Gilman?
I have no town reports. I do have quite an extensive discussion on state municipal actions. So I don't know if you want to go to the other two first.
We can come back to that, yeah. Selectman Charter?
My only activity outside of these meetings, I did attend the special Select Board meeting on the 28th, and I promptly recused myself, so I was a spectator at that meeting.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Nothing from me.
Okay. The Swayze Park trustees took the month of December off, and I did attend the River Advisory Committee meeting on December 21st. We had a presentation on enhanced sewer and septic, which took up the bulk of the meeting. It was pretty informative. And it'll be exciting to see Mr. Velasquez take that forward. We did have some folks at the end for public comment on, on the, on the dam, and that was the extent of that. So Selectwoman Gilman?
Thank you very much. Last week, the State House met Wednesday and Thursday to consider retained bills, which are bills from last year that were retained in each committee for further study. And I'm just going to go over a couple that affect either how we run or what will affect our residents because of how we run. One was relative to the physical fitness performance requirements of law enforcement officers. It was defeated by voice, was to get rid of them totally. Not have any. And, I don't know. I started marking them up. Chartered Public Schools getting more funding. Passed. Let me skip forward. Okay, so, under election law, one of the good things that happened was that we passed a bill to have the Secretary of State pay out to communities 3.3 million, not each, but altogether, towards voting machines to, from the HEVA funds, the Help America Votes funds. So that was a good turnout. There've been quite a few, or quite a few, but a lot of talk over the last couple of years about ranked choice voting. So there are two bills that, let's see. Yeah, two votes that failed, and we've got a couple more bills coming up this year. It's an interesting concept. They wanted to start it out at municipal elections. One of the things that it's supposed to do is help with runoffs. You'd have three candidates and, and, you know, two would be tied, and so then you'd have to have a runoff. And this just ranks them, and whoever has the most wins, and you're done. So there'll be some more coming up about that, about what level of ranked choice voting we want to go up to. The enactment of an election informational portal passed, so people will be able to register to vote online if they want to be a qualified voter, you know, with the. What's that piece of paper they have to sign?
An affidavit.
Thank you. If they want to vote through an affidavit process, because they don't want to show their ID or something like that. They still have to do that in person at the polls. And the good thing that happened under municipal and county government was that, yet again, was a bill to go with the default budget and make it even harder for us. I think we're doing a really great, really well this year to have it so close to the operating budget. This one was going to reach into if we hired somebody at a lower rate than the proposed. They used three different budgets to make, configure this. But the, if we hire, if we had a job advertised at 100,000 and we hired somebody at 90,000, then the default budget would be 90,000. And, you know, then if something happened and somebody, we had to hire somebody for 100,000, we wouldn't be able to. So that failed, and I.
Good.
And I did the part of the argument, so I feel very happy about that. There's another right-to-know law thing that occurred. It has to do with somebody from the general public. If we're going to be talking about someone from the general public, that they have 48 hours of advance notice, and they can show up with their lawyer, et cetera, et cetera. That is pretty much in the RSA right now, except for the timeline of the 48 hours, and that one failed, too. It's going to be worked on, I'm sure, but. Just under it's. That was the default. There was also one from, through the Energy Committee that involved the privacy of information and that, and this goes from businesses to education. People need to opt in or out of having their name and address and birthday, et cetera, being able to be used by different bodies. And part of the problem with it was that it would, as Mr. Dean alluded to, that we were in the first 10 communities that joined CPCNH for community power, and there's another set of 10 ready to start up, I think, this, at the end of this billing cycle, so in the early fall. And then there's another 10 after that. So our buying capacity is, is getting bigger, which is nice. But in order to establish those committees, they have to know who they're billing and who's using the energy. So this got amended, and the amendment passed, so that the CPCNH part is covered. And, and that was part of my report on CPCNH. So now I want to turn to what's happening, and I'm just talking about municipal and county right now. What's coming up? And let me see which day. We're meeting tomorrow, that's one thing. It's all tax exemptions, establishing a homestead exemption, then a separate bill to quantify the exemption, how much money the exemption can get. More tax exemptions for certain disabled veterans, charitable organizations. I thought that was going to be harsh, but it's really for some charitable, some defined charitable organizations to be able to file their taxes or pay their taxes late. Which is interesting. Public notice of zoning and Board of Adjustment hearings. That had to do with actually the, a butter notification and the definition of a butter. I think they are making it actually finer than it is currently. And then next week, and let me make sure I'm not closing myself out. Sorry. Next week, we're talking about local tax caps, but only they're, they're changing how it's defined again, or trying to again. Somebody wants to livestream all notice meetings and hearings, which is not possible for every community in, in the state, but we'll hear more about that. There's one, H1544, is the indemnification for municipalities adopting policies to address homelessness. And then there's going to be another one about policies that we are prohibited from establishing, and that one is quite extensive, but that's not this, this time. Things that are coming up, and, and Selectwoman Belanger, you're going to be really interested in following these. There's a housing bill that is aimed at stabilizing rent, and it would put the Select Board in charge of stabilizing the rent in the community.
Well, I just made the same face.
Not everybody did. I don't have any idea where that's going to go. Well, no, I have an idea where it's going to go.
Yeah, you do.
But somebody's bringing it up, and they're going to keep, I know who it is, and they're going to keep bringing it up.
Who knows what's going to come from a conversation?
That's right. And then there's another one that would, that allows for residential uses by right in any, any commercial zone, any kind of commercial zone. There's another accessory dwelling unit bill to allow for two accessory dwellings per lot. And I, my understanding when I read it was that none of the other zoning criteria needed to be met, like setbacks or connection to water and sewer, and those kind of things, so I don't know how that go. So it's the Special Committee on Housing that the Speaker established last year, I believe, are not hearing any of their bills until February. So there's some time to look at them in, in depth. That's where the ADU one is. But my committee gets to discuss stabilization. And that's it for me.
Wow. You've been busy.
Yeah, a lot of reading.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the update, and thank you for the work that you do up there. And Exeter is very fortunate for our representation.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
I will, I will, I know we get the. I will, I will. I know we get the New Hampshire Municipal Association Bulletin, but there are other bills that are coming up, and particularly because of being involved with CPCNH, some of the energy bills are going to be important for everyone to hear. The schedule right now is that every committee is going to be blasting through their bills, so there isn't a lot of time for me to write up something before we have a meeting, and, you know, we just finished at 6:00 last Thursday, and, and, you know, I just didn't have time to get something in by noon. But I would like to, if I can, provide something for the packet that has a little bit more detail than, than this. And Mr. Dean referenced CPCNH and the, and the rate setting. People will be getting a mailer about what the new rates are. We are still lower than EverSource, Unitil, all the other energy providers in the state. We are, most of the folks in Exeter are Unitil customers, and we're going to be at 8.1 cents per kilowatt hour. Unitil is going to be at 10.075 or something like that. So, there's about a 23%, 24% savings from that provider. EverSource is got a, is 8.25 cents per kilowatt hour, so it's not a big difference if you're an EverSource customer, but my understanding is that the, those two companies in particular have a change in their, some people were billed too much, and some people were billed too, too little, which is really concerning. So, that's why the jump from EverSource is so, so large.
Okay.
They're down, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Correspondence, real quickly. We received a letter, recognition, thanks from CASA for contribution. We talked about the letter from the citizen that was talking about the boards and committees. We addressed that already. Selectwoman Belanger referenced the data on HelpSys. We also have the NHMA legislative update as well. There are several, multiple pieces of correspondence from folks who weighed in with the select board regarding the rug property as well as Pearpoint Park. This does not represent all of the letters or emails. Many of them that are not attached here came after the packet was put together. We'll be including those in our packet for next week, and I did try to personally respond to everybody. I hope I got to everybody, but we're always appreciative when folks write in, and we always consider all of their thoughts. So, looking at the board calendar, our next meeting is next Tuesday, which is the Bond and Warrant Article Budget Meeting. Following that, select board meetings on January 29th, February 12th, February 26th, March 4th, and March 18th. Other dates to note is the presidential primary, January 23rd, which we all have to work. Deliberative session, February 3rd, and of course, the town election on March 12th. There's one other date I'd like to bring up that's on the calendar. We are, we had put it as a placeholder, but we're scheduled to have an all boards and committees meeting on February 7th. Given all of our meetings, as well as the two elections, I would ask the board's consideration to postpone that all boards and committees meeting to after our goal-setting session in April.
Yes, please.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So, Mr. Dean, if you could cancel that on the calendar, and we can reschedule after our goal-setting session in April.
Will do.
Terrific.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Next Tuesday's meeting has an unusual start time, correct? 6:00 PM, as opposed to 7?
No, it should start at 7.
7:00 PM?
Oh, okay.
Unless, it's actually a regular board meeting. It's, we publish a regular agenda for it.
Okay.
But it is specific for the budget and bond hearings.
So, it doesn't start at 6?
7. It does not start at 6.
Got it. Thanks.
In, in the Novak Room.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could to, I just wanted to let the board know, too, that keep in mind that deliberative session does have a snow date, February 6th, in the evening at the high school.
February 6th. That gives us even more reason to postpone February 7th.
In the event we are snowed out on February 3rd.
Well, let's hope, let's hope not, but, okay. Anything else from the board? Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Want to thank everybody, wish you all good evening. We are.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.